All right, I would like to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order for Tuesday, July 27th at 6:12 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shank, present. Chad Sexton-Duranian, present.
Veronica Cal, present. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the meeting is being recorded and it is on Channel 9 Live and it'll be posted on YouTube after the fact. Are there any additions or deletions? I have none.
I have none, I have none.
All right, thank you. No deletions. Public comment period. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? All right.
You're the only one that has the...
You can be the only one to see, right?
Yeah, we don't, we can't see the...
Oh, you, oh.
Where, do you have it up on yours?
Yeah, I do.
Do you see anybody in the hands?
I don't see any raised hands, nobody's speaking. Okay, all right, no public comments. Moving on to approve the minutes for June 2nd, 2021. They probably got posted last night.
Yeah, I've seen that. I have, I have no, no changes.
Wow.
I know.
Even grammatical or capitalization or... All right, excellent. Is there a motion to accept the minutes for June 2nd, 2021?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the minutes for June 2nd, 2021.
Second?
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Okay, I will put those in, I don't think I have them in the minutes SharePoint, so I'll move them there. All right. It's 6:15 and we have an appointment with Stan Dillis and Squanico Greenways to discuss the footbridge over the Squanico to connect the rail trail to South Harbor Road, is that something?
Yes.
Okay.
I sent it, sent the plan electronic.
You did.
But it's not up there. So this, this is a project that Squanico Greenways has found somebody to fund for them. This is old Meeting House here where there's a parking area here where the DCR land is.
Okay.
Oh, I'm in the way of the camera.
Yeah, I want to. Do we have an easel or something that we could put that up on?
Yeah, actually, can you put it up there if I can watch?
I can try to screen share. I do have it in SharePoint, it's probably, well, what is this? That's a four pager, correct? Okay, so give me a minute. Can I screen share?
How do you share?
Host disabled, participants screen sharing. Okay, I'm the first now, so let me...
That's off, right?
So.
Yeah, well, that's what we're gonna do.
We won't share my screen up there, will we?
Yeah.
Oh, well?
Yeah.
Oh, cool, okay, so let me get that.
Well, now that we figured out the sound, that should be okay, Madam Chair.
All right, give me, give me a minute to get to it. Wait, I'm on this machine. Yeah, our plan set, is that what it is?
Yeah.
And it, the one we want there.
And which page do you want?
Sheet two.
All right, let's give this a shot.
So, five minutes.
If you see it as a share, then you should...
Oh, okay. I don't know if this is gonna share. Are you seeing this?
No, I'm not seeing anything yet.
So what we're seeing is on your computer? What we're seeing is on your computer?
On the screen?
Yeah.
It, it's not gonna go from here. I'm sorry.
All right, we're gonna have to wing it, we're gonna have to show it somehow so people can see it. Well...
There you go.
Can we set it up somewhere that the owl would catch it?
Stan will need to be talking and I think it will pick up from him.
Oh, yeah. So he's gonna take that camera and zoom right in on it.
Yeah. All right. Actually, he's picking it up. So if you turn it a little bit this way, you've gotta hit it down a little bit. Don't go by there.
Sorry, I have to use my other to, my system preferences aren't set up to to share the screen and I'm not doing it.
Let me hold it, I'll go over there, Stan.
It looks fine on TV if you leave it on the chair.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, it's just, it don't...
Okay, all right.
Hang on, I'm just gonna...
Okay.
So what the, the project is to improve Old Meeting House Road.
Recording in progress.
From that parking area at the end where the rail trail is up here, there's three houses up on the rail trail, there's a little parking area there. Improve that from that parking area to the river and on the other side of the river on Old Meeting House Road to where the road is already improved. It's about 1,500 linear feet of road. The surface will be similar to what's on the rail trail now and there'll be a bridge, a footbridge constructed across the river. So we need two things from you guys. We need a decided authorization form so we can represent the project between all the other boards. Okay, you have that? And we obviously need your permission to undertake this since it's in the right of way.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Can you tell me which side at 119 is?
119 is up here.
Okay.
At 119 up here, the rail trail's here. There's, I think, three houses beyond the rail trail, that little parking area is here. The roads are moved down to that parking area now.
Right, okay.
So it'll be from that point on, the road, the road exists, you can actually drive all the way down to the river.
Right.
And coming the other way, there's, there's just some piles of dirt there, so it gets kind of steep. But it would be just improve that surface that's there, build the bridge. And on this side, there's enough grading that they'll have to be a little bit tinewall on each side to get down to the river. Cause there's a high, there's a high point right here.
Okay. I guess my question is, how wide is that? Can it be used for vehicles at all or is it bicycles and people?
It would be bicycles and people only.
What about horses? Someone asked.
I think horses are allowed on the rail trail in general and this would be wide enough for a horse, but it wouldn't be wide enough for vehicles. And what they would do here at the bridge would be, I don't know if you've seen Bidget Bridge in Raleigh, they have something that impedes ATVs from going across it. So that, the goal would be to keep this for pedestrians, non-motorized dancers.
Okay.
And this would provide a direct connection over here with Timberlake.
Right, so people could fly down.
You know, South Hill Road is right up here and then Warren Road is up a little way. So it would provide a really nice connection for that section of town to get to the rail trail.
Absolutely.
The section of the rail trail that they've done, it's came out beautiful.
Yep, great job.
All right, so all you're asking for us is the right to quit... Or on the road?
Replace the bridge that was washed out in the 1938 hurricane.
Yes.
Took a little late, but we're, you know, we're working on it. And then make improvements within the right of way.
Okay.
So we'll need, we'll need conservation, approval, endangered species.
But you'll go through all of that. We're just giving you permission to move on.
Because they're working on our property, similar to the senior center.
Right.
Right, stormwater, earth excavation. We need, we need a...
But you'll do all that, we're just saying, okay?
So you give us authorization to represent, you're the owner, for us to represent the owner before the other boards.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, we need permits and all of that for this, right? So that's what you're representing us for.
Conservation, endangered species, stormwater, probably earth excavation for the CBA and ultimately a building permit for the bridge.
But that's what you're handling.
We're doing all that.
We are not doing nothing.
All I'm asking for you is permission for me to do that, for me to trace my...
All those applications for permits require that the owner had, that you have the permission of the owner to do the work and that's what this says.
I think it'd be a great asset for the community to have that bridge over that river.
I move to have Dillis and Roy represent the town in Town Boards to gain the necessary permits to allow construction for this section of the Squanico rail trail.
And for, for us to sign the authorization for representation.
So amend it then. Second?
All right. And further discussion? Anything else we think we should know?
I don't think so.
All right, then, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes.
So can we just sign that now and give it to them?
We can sign that now.
Do you want to make a copy?
I have copies.
I have two copies, so if you wanna sign both, I'm sure we'll have a copy machine somewhere.
Well, it's the same thing, right? So we can just copy that.
Yeah, just go up there and it gives you, it'll be okay to move ahead.
We've submitted the notice of intent today.
All right, good.
I would imagine it's gonna be a little bit of a lengthy process, there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts there.
Well, they will be there, you, you have some people to talk to, aren't you?
Oh, yeah.
But let's hope that they all have the same thoughts and idea that it's, it's a great asset for the community.
I agree.
That's the most important that we all have to think about here.
Yeah.
Is there a date needed on this?
I think if you just put today's date, it would be fine.
Stan, can you have the copy for us?
Sure.
I don't need like a retina scan or anything.
Not yet.
Jesus, I'm used, I'm used to seeing you and signing my law and all of that, right?
Is the timeframe for this next summer?
I would imagine, yeah. We, I don't think we'll get through the approval process that quickly. The wild card or the longest thing is gonna be the endangered species people cause they, they are all still working from home and it's, they just, right now, they're taking forever.
How many copies we need of this?
I, I did walk it with someone.
You did too.
Oh, good.
And they said, oh, I'll have to bring it to the group when you submit something. We don't know what that will go. But it is a podcast.
Right. Next step, next step, you guys. Thank you so much for all the work that you're doing for that.
Yeah, thanks on behalf of Squanico Greenways, Veronica and the board.
And we'll talk again about not weed, just not yet.
All right, understood.
It's not about not weed today.
Thank you, sir.
But another tone, so thank you very... As soon as Joe is back from making the copies. All right, thank you.
I don't need my laptop.
You guys, is that a record keeper sent me?
I'm gonna put this, I'll scan it and put it for five minutes. All right, so, actually, we're not putting it too... Moving on to appointments of officials and personnel. We got a request to reappoint the Dog Park Feasibility Committee. So I made it, there was no, on the request, there was no term ending. So I was wondering, should I make it April 2022 or should I make it June 2022? Because we usually do appointments in June.
Um, I did receive, we did receive at 6:07 an additional email from Sarah Grant.
Okay.
And in it, it says, "We have been a committee since 2018 to present a report to the feasibility of a dog park in Townsend. Our group feels confident that we can present a report to the Board of Selectmen by the end of 2022, if not before."
I'm, I'm gonna do this through June 2022.
Yeah, okay.
June 20, yeah, 22, yeah.
June 2022, cause that's when we tend to reappoint, all those appointments in June.
Right, I think that makes complete sense.
So is there a motion?
Yes, I move that we reappoint the following members to the Dog Park Feasibility Committee with an appointment until June 2022. Sarah Grant, Julie Byers, Laura Dole, Cheryl Lutour, Janelle Hart. There is an alternate position still available.
Second?
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. So congratulations, everybody, and I go over to the report. All right. Moving on to discussion, to business, meaning business. The discussion of the Bouillon Bistro Common Bidler's License. I put in SharePoint, but let me ask you, was it empty? Did you see what I put in?
I could see it, I couldn't print it.
I can tell you how you need to do it.
Oh, okay, so tell me how to...
So you go to the listing.
Okay, give me a minute. All right, I'm after listing.
Make the circle red on, that's on the left. On the top, it says grid, view grid.
Yes, added in grid view.
Click it once.
Okay.
Click it again. Now right-click on the name and it should allow you to open it in browser. No?
I tried opening it before to print it and I couldn't.
Yeah, there's, it's the way it was saved, I don't, I...
Did you have problems too?
Well, yeah, but that's how I, I...
Okay, I downloaded it and here I've got it. So, to the licensing authority, the undersigned hereby plus for license in accordance with the provisions of the statutes relating to, young to go doing business is Bouillon Bistro, restaurant, dine-in and takeout at 53 Main Street, which is 119 in Townsend, Mass. And we have the information for the owner. And sole proprietor of partnership, it's a restaurant, bar, eating establishment. And all we need to do really is about whether or not to authorize it.
So I've never done one of these before, so...
We have all, I have only ever done...
Renewals?
The renewals. So on this, we allow it and then they can go forward and have everything checked to make sure it's legitimate.
Yeah.
And so we are the local licensing authority. So once it comes to us, then it goes to...
Kind of board of health and everybody else should be involved and they, they'll be limited to what they got.
But we are the local licensing authority and have to...
So we're just licensing the business?
We're saying it's okay for them to operate.
Right, that's it.
Yeah.
No other, everything else they have to get from...
Other...
Other agencies.
I believe they have to get all their permits, yes.
So, yeah. I'm having issues with that.
God bless anybody that wants to try and open something new today and it's good for the community.
I agree.
We would, we are the, so if you look on, I don't know which page, this is page two at the bottom of Fish and Fish Only. City of town, permit and license number, that will be assigned issuing authority, we will be the selectmen.
Yeah. So I move that we allow the Bouillon Bistro Common Victorian License.
Second?
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Now, do we have to sign this or is there one, a hard copy that's gonna be somewhere?
I'll check with them soon tomorrow.
All right.
I think they have a hard copy.
All right. And we can maybe modify that and sign that out of session if we have to?
Uh, yeah, modify to...
Modify to sign out of session?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
We vote already now that we've...
Well, we modified, now we're gonna vote on it.
Okay. So the, it's up to signing on session. All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton-Duranian, yes.
All right, moving on to the town administration updates and reports. We have Purple Heart Day coming up on August 7th at Memorial Hall. Did anybody print the letter? Would you like to read the letter for everyone?
Um, this letter is dated July 19th to Nishoba Valley Voice. "The town of Townsend, Massachusetts will be conducting a dedication ceremony honoring all Purple Heart recipients and those who gave the ultimate sacrifice for their country. The Townsend Selectmen and women will be proclaiming Townsend a Purple Heart community on National Purple Heart Day, August 7th, 2021, which is a Saturday. The ceremony will take place Saturday, August 7th, 2021, at 11:00 AM at the Memorial Town Hall. All Purple Heart recipients, veterans and the general public are cordially invited to attend, respectively Joseph J. Mazzola, Veteran Service Officer for the town of Townsend."
Um, so we'll be using the gray color, thank you, Chad. We, I've let facilities know so that there will be chairs set up.
Okay.
And so there will be. And for the sound system, TCAM is gonna be providing that for us. Do you wanna say something about that at all day?
Just Pepperl has graciously asked if they could be involved and if they're going to bring up the portable sound system they have. And they will be assisting us in videoing and providing audio for the sound.
And what, what we need to do is represent the board, what do they expect of us?
They are looking for one of us to speak. Joe has been working on a, on a program and they would like someone from the Board of Selectmen to speak, so...
I think a motion, Chad did a great job on the wall that's healing, so...
And I was second that, because he did. So, are you up for another? Are you up for another?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, all right.
How are we gonna plan on all of us attending that? Is that their way?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I've already marked it on my calendar, so I'm good.
My calendar's got so many marks, I don't know what I could put on anymore.
Um, then, i- is Joe putting, he's taking care of all the details, so I just connect with him and...
Pretty much, he's advertising in the paper. He's seeing that the signs are getting put up around town, the signs have been ordered, that he came to us several meetings ago. So he's taking care of all of that. He does have, I didn't get a copy of his program, but he does have a program. And, you know, whether he needs people to be introduced or whatever, I think it's mostly to have people, he didn't know how many Purple Heart recipients there are in Townsend. But there are different, you know, veteran organizations that will be here for this. That's all.
We'll leave that up to you, Chad, if you don't mind, and reach out and make sure we, we as a board do what we need to do.
Yep.
Let us know.
I'll do what I did before and I'll put it together.
Together and let us know. Absolutely, good job.
Thank you very much. So Saturday, August 7th and 11th, and I saw that there was something on the website about it, so that is good. West Townsend Reading Room. I put this on here because Misty has been getting a lot of requests now that we're open again and she's been taking care of those. There is a committee, but it was made up of only one person. So I think we wanna consider resurrecting the West Townsend Reading Room Committee. So, and I am the liaison for that. And so I just wanted to put this out here so it doesn't get lost because things come in a lot during the day and night. I just don't want it lost, I think we need to do that. So reorganizing the com- the committee and then kind of moving the management of rentals to them as opposed to us, there are, like, how do you get the key? Who has the key? That sort of thing. And there is a rental fee, Misty's been taking checks for that. So, anyway, that's why it's on here, just to, for awareness sake.
So, Madam Chair, are we gonna post on, put a notice up?
Yeah, I'm gonna post for West Townsend Reading Room. See if we can get more people. All right, the next is a discussion of funding of the Greenville Road Bridge. I put this because we're continuing to talk about this. So... There anything or, oh my goodness, okay, so Chad, you want on?
Um, the, the House and the Senate are, there, there's the infrastructure bills. But both maintain that the Chapter 90 is gonna probably remain the same as far as what Townsend's gonna be getting.
Yeah.
So I think our discussion needs to lean towards how are we going to be able to, to fund this? I'd like to be able to, with, with our talks with the impending interim town administrator, that individual is gonna be key in the options. So my, my thought and then into talking with, with the state officials, it, it might be best for me just to gather as much information and then sit down with the interim when we, when we make a decision on that. That way, we have all of the options available. We have the borrowing option, we have the option of using Chapter 90.
Every day.
Right, so, yeah. There's, there's, there's several different things that we can do. And I think with the interim and then talking with accounting, to be able to really get a better feel of what is gonna be the, the wiser of the decisions. I'm basically keeping in touch... Um, I'm basically keeping in touch with the highway superintendent. I mean, he's right on top of what's going on as well. Um, I'm trying to arrange a time so that maybe, um, I can meet with Sheila and Jim uh, at the same time so that we can, because Jim is, has been making phone calls and looking into the chapter 90 when that's coming in. How much that's going to be, pretty much know how much that, that will be. But, uh, you know, there's, there's other avenues. He and I had a conversation yesterday, I think it was. That we tossed around a couple of out of the box kind of situations. He told me that I would look into it with Senator Conrad and see if that's available. So that's kind of sort of what I got. I mean, right now it's going to be a lot of paperwork and a lot of footwork for me. But once, uh, I think once we start figuring out as far as the interim and then really working with, um, accountants, the financial end of it, I think we'll be able to, to then have a more solid conversation.
Alright, so let me know when we should go back on to agenda.
Okay.
I'm not going to put it on until you let me know.
Madam Chairman?
Um, yes, Andrea.
Do we have any idea here the cost?
Yes, Chad, do you want to talk about it? We do.
Um, the, the cost meaning what we're looking for to fund to get it going, Andrea?
Yes.
Um, the bid that we wanted to go with.
1.2 million.
It's, yeah, total of 1.2 million.
And then with the engineering costs, et cetera, details, contingencies.
Yeah, we have a 200,000 for, um, the engineering, which we've already technically spent. Um, basically it's shovel in the ground right now. I mean, we've got the engineering all set, we've got the bids all set. Um, we probably will need updated bids, um, when we get to that point. Um, but it's going to be about 1.2 million.
Thank you.
Um, that also includes a $500,000 grant. That the reason why we need to get this done, because if we don't make a decision, um, probably by September, we're going to lose the 500,000, so.
Well, the 500,000 is good until September of 2022.
Right.
So, um, we, it would be good to have this settled by sometime.
Because every year goes, this bridge is going to cost more.
Yeah.
That is correct. Although Dick did say the other day, maybe the construction.
Yeah, it ain't coming down, it ain't coming down.
Anyway, okay.
Doesn't look like it.
Um, alright, uh, discussing landscaping contract. Um, do we know that three bids were, it was a procurement thing? Do we know that there were three bids made?
No.
For this contract?
Not that I know of, no. This was a, this was a contract, um, that was, um, conducted by, um, I think the town administrator. Uh, because the board had, at that time, had voted to change from having parks in or cemetery and parks mowed along to a contractor.
That was like that.
Right.
Several years ago.
Right. So, the, there has been no, um, contract has just been given as it, each year. There's, there's no time period. Usually we'll say a three-year contract and then, um, at the end of that, we'll go back out to bid. This hasn't gone out to bid, so I think we need to go out to bid.
We, well, we need to get three estimates.
Right.
Um, it doesn't have to be bid, but it ha- you have to get three estimates.
That's what I meant.
And then, so I guess what I would like is a motion to accept this. Well, we can't really do that.
Until we get the bids.
We need to get three bids, so.
We have to unfortunately, uh, if it hasn't been done right, we, we need to move forward and do it right.
Right, so this is a procurement issue, I would just want to be clear with everybody so we are all understanding. Um, it doesn't mean anything that we're not going to be going with this, but procurement is, we have to have three bids and we have to, you know, follow the process that state has lined out.
So, this will have to get.
Because it's a $28,000 contract for the year.
Correct.
And the contract ended in June. And it, it didn't have a renewal contingency in it. And so it has to go back after estimates, we need three estimates.
How are we going to go about doing that? Chad, are you a liaison, are we going to post it in newspaper or what, what's our plans?
Well, this is a facilities department, so the facilities needs to get three bids for it.
Okay, so, once we have three bids, we can reconsider.
Then we can move forward.
So I'll forward this to the, uh, facilities, um, superintendent.
Sounds good. Alright, um, moving on to 5.1.5, I'm just looking at my time here. Um, Jared had sent us the retros for, so let me just take a minute to talk about how, um, the pay rates are working and increases. All employees should see at the grade that they are at the contract settlement, you know, the 3%, 2%, 2% in their, um, pay that comes out this week, July 21st. That anything, okay, so where you won't see it is if you were reclassified mid-year or if you were, um, reclassified as far as grade goes for FY '22. Those have not been settled between the union and the town yet. So where the pay increases, the tentative agreement, the Collins and three for FY '20, a step which is 2% for FY '21 and a step for FY '22. Everybody will get that at their current grade. People that were reclassed will not see that until we've settled with the, um, union as far as job descriptions go and reclassifications. Once those are agreed to between the union and the town, those increases will go into effect and they will include a retroactive payment from the beginning of FY '22, which is July 1st. Alright, so the, the new FY '22 pay grade for anybody that was not reclassified. And even if you did think you were going to be reclassified, you still moved along in the grid. Those pay increases are in this week's pay. I've already talked about reclassifications. People who were already at the top of their grade will not see any change for the most part. Because they're off grade, they're off the scale, the steps for that grade. Alright, so then we have retros. So, pay scale is set except for reclassifications. Um, retroactive payments, which are the differences for FY '20 and FY '21 are what is in the spreadsheet that Jared provided us with. And, and that is still moving, but pretty much what he has in that spreadsheet is settled. People who were reclassified are not seeing retro payments yet. So there are a few reclassifications, we'll see some zeros there.
Yeah.
Same with people that are at the top of their pay grade, they will not see a retro. So that's pretty much it.
Well, just one question, Doc, you said everyone just had a conversation with the dog officer today. Does she fall into any of these?
She's a special category, I don't know that she is in the union at all.
And?
Uh, if you are non-union, this does not apply. If you are non-union, what for the most part happened um, was that you were put on Collins with a, with a staff. So you were put on Collins where you were at or just above where you were at. Nobody got, you know, less pay, um, where you were at or just above. Um, and, uh, and then you got a staff. So, uh, the dog officer is, I don't think in the police union, is it in any?
Well, I don't think she is. She's in any, any particular, she's just like, I don't know. I mean, you mentioned that, you know, she would do, when they did yearly raises, she would be part of getting a yearly raise, but to just asking, did we just forget about her? I don't know, and I don't have that answer.
I don't either.
Who do we ask?
She, we'll talk about that for an executive session, I think. Because we didn't, I, I'm trying to, the police union isn't settled yet. So the police union, although we agreed to the increases, we don't yet have, that's why we have the executive session. Everything isn't all settled for that.
I think we should talk with the police.
Yeah, when we do, yeah, and I'll that deal with that way.
Yeah, I know that, I'm, I'm talking more clerical supervisors, highway water.
Yeah.
Um, fire is still being worked and, uh, police, I believe.
I just want to make sure we don't accidentally leave somebody out that we forgot.
Yeah, that wasn't the intention.
And that's why I think, you know, I think it's a good thing we're just checking.
We'll have to.
Make everybody whole, thank you.
I agree.
Alright, so, um, so all I wanted to do was to ratify the retros that were there. Sure, I don't know if you had time to look at them? To say that those look good?
Yeah, so I, I, good work, Jared.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, this is, this is a lot of work to do.
So.
Um, so do you need a motion to ratify? I don't think we do, because we didn't really.
We, we already agreed to the terms, so.
Put it in black and white, yeah.
Um, unless there's something that jumps out on you there. The few questions that there are noted.
Yeah.
There.
Yeah.
And, um, again, the reclassifications are for FY '22.
Correct.
So they won't affect the retros, the retros are based on the prior grade.
Okay.
So, um. That's about it.
Good.
Alright. Any reports from Board Liaison?
Oh, good. I mentioned last time, we'll be having some meetings with the Fire and Peace Chief and the Dabs at a comm center and different things, so we'll be put on that as we move forward.
Alright, um. Announcements, communication?
Well, I have liaison, I just wanted to, to thank the Cemetery and Parks for helping out the Board of Health. Uh, Roger and Drew are going over to help out the recycling center. This is, uh, something that I've been trying to establish, is to get the boards working together. And this is, this is a prime example of that. I want to thank everybody involved, Carla and Chris and everybody who, uh, who was working on that. On, we, um, we are going to be moving forward to, um, two positions that are open at the recycling center. Um, and we'll be posting those, uh, we'll be getting up on the website very shortly. But, um, I just want to thank those two boards for working together. Um, I also was at the planning board meeting yesterday and, um, they were going to appoint the master plan committee, reappoint the master plan committee, but they're holding off until next Monday. Uh, in regards to that, um, there has been, uh, drafts sent into the planning board for the master plan. Uh, it looks like that is supposed to be buttoning up very shortly to get it on, uh, the planning board's plate and then the planning board will, will take it from there. But that's all I have to report on that. Um, oh, and the safe routes to school, um, that's going to be starting up in September. So we'll have, uh, the planning board rep has, has their, Carol is going to be working on that, so we're going to have some probably some future action on what's going on with that as well.
Communications and announcements, I think, uh, for the Board of Health. They asked that we, um, it's an attestation letter for the grant that we need to sign, so I just want, um, to have a vote, do you need to sign that? Did we do that already? No, we, we talked about it yesterday, but I, I was putting it on for today. So this is for the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, Office of Local and Union Health, Public Health Excellence Grant Program for Shared Services. So this is just to attest that we will.
That's just, you just need the chair's signature?
The chair's signature, yes.
Um, so I move that the chair sign the attestation form for the Public Health Excellence Grant Program for Shared Services.
Chair second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calle, yes. So I will get that signed and put it in the school box. Alright, thank you, and then I also have here, um, a, a letter that came in that I wanted to read. This is, um, for the public body there. Do you want to read it, Chad? Are you the liaison?
No, yes. Yes, I am the lia- liaison, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, let me, let me, um.
Just like that quick, yes, well. Get yourself out of that one.
Okay, this came in on Wednesday.
Okay.
Um, dear Stacy, I would like to thank you and your entire staff for the outstanding job you all did in making library service available to the fullest extent possible during the past 16 months. When everything suddenly shut down in March 2020, you provided information on how to use the library wifi from the parking lot so people without access could use it for school and work. Very shortly after, you started book borrowing from the Townsend collection with safe pickup right outside the library front door. Soon you began offering interlibrary loan services. Events were initially provided via Zoom and later in person safely outdoors. As conditions improved and guidelines eased, you increased services along with it, until we were back to normal. And the library homepage was always updated with the latest services and events. Having the library available during this isolating time was a blessing. Thanks to all of you from a grateful library patron, Pam Smith. I just wanted to read that and thank the lo- uh, the library and the staff there for.
All of the staff, librarians, everybody, yeah.
And so that was a great feat to get done and stay open.
It was a lot of work.
A lot of work.
And they did a great job.
Thank everybody for that.
Um, that's all I have for announcements and, oh, communications, one last thing. This came in yesterday, the environmental notification form.
Yes.
For the well, the mainsuit well.
Yeah.
So if you get a chance, take a look, I'm in, take a look, it's on the bio panel. In the Board's office. Next meeting, uh, is tomorrow, it's an executive session only at 5:30 PM. Here at Town Hall, there is no Zoom link because it is an executive session only, it's posted. Uh, Thursday, July 29th at 6:15, we have, um, interviews with the interim town administrator and I believe that is posted as well now. Um, I do need to get emails after them, I didn't have time today, so, um, I would do that this evening. And then also Friday at noon and Monday at noon. Uh, we are hoping to be, um, able to appoint the interim town administrator at our office third meeting. So that is the plan. Um, is there a motion to review and sign payroll and bill's payable warrants out of session?
Uh, I move that we review and sign payroll and bill's payable warrants out of session.
Second?
Um, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calle, yes. So we are moving on to the executive sessions, um, there are two of them and we will not be returning to.
Open session.
Open session, so is there a motion?
Our 6.1, Madam Chair, I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body or the chair so declares. This is in regards to West Pond Incorporated versus Town of Townsend Conservation Commission. Would you second me too?
Um, yes.
Uh, and 6.2, executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. This is in regards to Ask Me Police and Ask Me Supervisors Union.
Second?
We will not return to open session.
Correct. Second, alright, um, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Charles Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calle, yes. And with that, uh, we are going to thank everybody for attending the meeting. If you couldn't find out of the Zoom, that would be great. out of the Zoom, that would be great, um, and.
Who's gonna record the executive session, you?
I'm gonna take notes.
Alright. Take notes and so.
We're, we're. We are in person for the first one, um, and I will Zoom for the second, yes, Jared, is Jared here?
Jared is there.
Hey.
Jared, were you going to attend at eight fifteen um, uh, via Zoom?
Yeah, I definitely can, if you're able to just shoot me a text when you want me to come back on.
We will do that, and we'll send you a link with it for a different Zoom link.
Sounds good.
Because, okay, and I, I believe the chief is coming in person.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, alright, so thank you all very much.